I'm going to call, someone needs to mute.
It's me.
Oh, thank you, Anthony.
Thank you, Anthony.
I'm going to call the December 19, 2022 meeting of the Woodbridge Board of Education to order at 7:03 PM. With a reminder to all those watching and participating remotely to kindly mute your microphones to avoid any background noise. This meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting consistent with Connecticut Public Act 22-3. The public may attend in person or electronically via WebEx. This meeting is being recorded and the recording will be available on the district website. This evening, I'm delighted to welcome Mrs. Vonda Tenza to the board table. Vonda officially began as our new superintendent last Monday, December 12, and she has already had a productive week with stakeholders and transitioning with interim superintendent Christine Syriak. So I welcome you, Vonda. Happy to have you here. I'll now call the role. Maria Madonik.
Present.
Sarah Beth Delpriet.
Present.
Remotely, Marcia. Jay Daya. Brooke Hopkins. Jeff Hughes.
Present.
Stephen Lawrence.
Present.
Mike Strambler.
Present.
Remotely, Marcia. Erin Williamson. I think she'll be.
Present. Yep, I'm here.
Remotely. Wonderful. And I'm Lynn Piazek. I'm here. Staff in attendance this evening include Ms. Vonda Tenza Superintendent, Ms. Christine Syriak Interim Superintendent, Ms. Donna Koonin, Director of Business and Operations, Ms. Carrie Borscherting, Director of Special Services, Ms. Annalisa Sherman, Principal, Mr. James Sapias Assistant Principal, and Ms. Marcia DiGennaro, Clerk of the Board remotely. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is correspondence. Sarah Beth, do we have any correspondence tonight?
No, there is not any.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, prior to public comment this evening, I would like to take a moment to publicly recognize Ms. Christine Syriak and acknowledge her work as the district's interim superintendent over the past six months. At the May 17 Board of Education meeting, I recommended the appointment of Ms. Christine Syriak as our interim superintendent commencing July 1. At that time, I spoke about her wealth of experience, her exemplary leadership skills, and her extraordinary personal attributes. I acknowledged the work Christine had previously accomplished during her tenure as the district's interim superintendent in 2020 as she oversaw the reopening of the building after the pandemic shutdown. Since the beginning of my career in education 44 years ago, I have experienced my fair share of interim administrators, four of which have been interim superintendents. Very often, these individuals merely keep the seat warm in between a departing superintendent and the arrival of a new one. They satisfy the statutory requirements which necessitates having a superintendent in every school district. They complete and sign the necessary State Department of Education paperwork, and they fulfill the day-to-day operations of running the district. However, the real work that allows the district to continue to grow and flourish is often put on hold or left in limbo. This has not been the case while Christine Syriak has sat in the superintendent's seat. She has worked tirelessly to move the district forward, always striving to uphold the school's mission and vision, always supporting and encouraging the faculty and staff, always guiding the Board of Education, and most importantly, always putting the students first. For the second time, Christine Syriak has stepped up to serve our community as a solid and sturdy bridge during difficult times of transition. She has fulfilled that task with proficiency, with grace, with humility, confidence, perseverance, and with an uncompromising moral compass. For these reasons and so many more, on behalf of the Board of Education and the entire school community, I want to offer our sincere thanks and heartfelt appreciation to Mrs. Christine Syriak.
Do you want to say something?
Okay.
So I just want to say thank you very much. Those are very kind words. And I'm just appreciative of the fact that I was asked to come back a second time. I felt when I left last time that things were still undone because of what was happening with COVID. So it's been a great experience for me to come back and have a second time here in Woodbridge. And thank you very much for that opportunity.
We certainly thank you. Okay, so now I will move on to public comment. Let's see if there is any public comment. Marcia, I don't see any public comment. Do you?
I'm not seeing anyone's hands raised.
Okay. You're all set? Okay, so I think we're set on public comment for this evening, seeing none. Move on to the PTO update. A written report from PTO can, as always, be found in Board Book. I encourage the public to access the report to see a listing of all the amazing contributions the PTO makes to the school district. Welcome, Ruchi, again this evening. Is there anything additional that you would like to add or highlight this evening, Ruchi?
I would like to also thank Dr. Syriak. And I think I had the honor of doing two Halloween hoots under Christine. So that was like amazing, right? Both that year, 2020 and now. So thank you so much. And I just want to thank all the board and administrators and teachers and wish everyone happy holidays.
Thank you, Ruchi, and thanks again to the PTO. I actually missed something in my notes prior to public comment after I acknowledged Christine because I got so excited about that. But I do want to say that on behalf of the board, I would also like to take a moment to recognize Beecher's dedicated administrators, faculty, and staff for everything that is done day after day to support the students of Beecher Road School and their families. As 2022 draws to a close, I want to thank these devoted professionals for their contributions they make that allows Beecher to be so special. So for the administrators who are here this evening, thank you so much. For any staff that are online watching, we thank you and appreciate you immensely. Next on the agenda is consent agenda. The minutes from both the November 16 special meeting, the November 21 regular meeting are included in this evening's consent agenda along with a budget narrative, a budget summary, the detailed financial report, and the combining financials. Does anyone on the board wish to extract anything from the consent agenda this evening? Okay, I don't see any. May I have a motion to accept the consent agenda, Maria, maybe?
I move the. I move the approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Brooke. Motion made by Maria Madonik, seconded by Brooke Hopkins. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. I see Mike. I see Sarah Beth. Erin, are you all set?
Yep.
Gotcha. Unanimous, Marcia. Thank you. Moving on to number three on the agenda, reports. So our first report will be given by our new superintendent, Vonda Tenza.
Thank you.
So you have to, you have to sip, put up your microphone. Unmute and put up your microphone.
Okay, thank you. Christine Syriak and I are going to share the superintendent's report this evening. And I would like to start by saying that last week I celebrated my first official week here as your superintendent, and I felt very welcomed. I spent time with your teachers, your administrators, and your students, the children. And everywhere I went, there were smiles and waves. I was able to attend the grade five and six concert, which were extremely well attended by family members and friends. And the concerts were phenomenal. The students were so proud to perform. And it really was heartwarming to have so many people gathered together to share their love of music and the arts. It was, it was a great evening. Beecher Road School, I do want to let you know, I know a letter went out through the school to the community, began implementing a new aspect of their school visitor program, the process, just to make it a little bit more safe. And families were informed last week of this new system. It's very simply the same process, but they have a scanning system now that it's commonly used across many districts. And once an individual's identification is scanned and recorded, the system is very robust and fluid and moves very smoothly. Last week, this was very exciting. I met Master Kim from Kim's International Martial Arts. And he came in and met with me and shared his sincere respect for our school community and generously donated $500 to Beecher Road School. We are very grateful for his continued partnership and ongoing respect of our schools and support of our students. And we gratefully accept his donation, which will be put in front of the board. I'd like to take a minute to make a formal thank you as well. So excuse me for just one second. I would like to also formally thank interim superintendent Christine Syriak for the time that she has shown to me and to help make my transition in your district as seamless as possible. In the middle of the year can be very stressful for staff, for board members, for the community in terms of a change of leadership. And Christine has worked tirelessly, not only on the budget presentation tonight, but also to share historical information and important pieces of learning that I need to be able to carry forth your work in the manner in which it's already been set in place. It's clear that with each interaction that I've had with a teacher, a parent, an administrator, support staff, and board member, Christine has done far more for this district these past many months than just this work for me. She has been thorough and detailed and has provided so many opportunities for me to see how special this school district is. And that word just comes to mind. I met with transportation departments this morning and special. Everything that I'm learning from Christine and everybody else shows me what a wonderful opportunity this is. And I have learned from Christine that careful listening and the value of probing questions will help me make collaborative decisions with you that will continue to move us forward. So I would like to express my gratitude to Christine and thank her for the opportunity to work next. And then finally, much of the superintendent's report this month would focus on the budget. And for that, I will transition over to Christine and Donna for the formal presentation of the budget. And please know that I have been involved in these steps so that I am informed and I am ready to continue this work.
Thank you. I just want to share that while I may have been working hard, I did not prepare a budget for this evening. No. I do have a budget to share with you. We kind of joked in the office earlier today that I would say something like that. While I call it up for, to share and to talk to you about, I do want to say, however, I thank you all for the kind words that you've shared. Whenever somebody says that someone worked tirelessly, though, I have to share with you, I am tired. So I don't know if I'm doing it right or not because I am pretty tired. But, but thank you again for your kind words. So good evening. The budget that I present to you this evening has been developed with the input from many individuals, inclusive of building administration, department leads, and team leader input. Donna Koonin began the process in October by reaching out to the department leads. Donna also began the work of moving the current budget forward based on contractual salary agreements. And I want to thank Donna for her endless hours devoted to this process and managing the challenge, this happened just the other day, of having me stand over her shoulder and saying things while she worked on a spreadsheet like, hey, that number changed, as if she wasn't aware the number had changed. So Donna, thank you for enduring me these past several weeks. While I began working, or when I begin working on the development of a budget, one of the things that I always like to keep in mind is the fact that we always have to keep the students in mind. And so I always try to think that every decision that we are making, is it in the best interest of students that we do that? So I also try to attempt to build a plan that takes into account the future needs of the district as well as the immediate needs of the district. This requires prioritizing some needs. To receive everything we would like all at once and then having the means to effectively implement the strategy, the equipment, the curriculum, or the ability to train and supervise the additional staff results would result in unintended consequences of inefficient execution and/or job dissatisfaction. So we cannot always get everything we want right at the onset. But we need to plan for those things that we know that eventually we're going to need. Therefore, I propose this budget knowing there are other elements that either the Board of Education or staff would like to see added, that I have not placed in the budget before you at this time. However, I believe that this budget lays the groundwork to build on the upcoming years. And I believe it supports the mission and vision of Beecher Road School as well as the new strategic plan goals that have been developed. The budget that I am presenting was developed in the best interest of students and with consideration of sustainability for the taxpayers moving forward. There are a few unique factors in the budget that I am presenting in that our budget did not include $167,500,000 that the town is providing to the Board of Education to offset special education costs. $167,500 is coming from excess cost grants that will be received by the town for the current school year. The special education costs were known costs when the fiscal year 23 budget was developed. The money wasn't intended for unbudgeted expenses. The Board of Ed removed the $167,500 from the special education tuition line in the fiscal year 23 budget, therefore reducing the overall budget percentage increase for fiscal year 23 from 6.5% to 5.51%. In reality, we have added that $167,000 into our budget for fiscal year 23 as it was known at the onset that the funds were needed to cover special education costs. For fiscal year 24, the costs of our current known outplayed students and the cost of the BCVA contracted services are built into the budget we present this evening. The $167,000 accounts for around 1% of the budget increase. I would argue it is not an increase in that it is part of the current fiscal year 23 budget. So what I present this evening as a 3.94% increase is in reality a 2.89% increase. If that $167,000 had been left in the budget and had not been presented last spring as a separate allotment to the Board of Education from the town, I will go back to this at the end of my presentation. As I go through the presentation, you will see that we have added 1.5 certified positions to the budget for the 23-24 school year. I will explain the positions in more detail as we present, as we go through the presentation. As we developed the proposed budget, we were using three guiding principles to provide a high-quality educational program that serves all students while advancing the district's goals over time, identify and prioritize opportunities to improve operational efficiencies through the reallocation of funds, and to develop a budget that respects the taxpayer. The key drivers that were in place as we did this were salary and benefit increases, increased energy costs, preparation for increasing enrollment and increasing student needs, special education, and reallocation of resources to increase efficiencies. I'll go over each of them in some detail. The salary and benefit increases, school budgets are slanted very heavily in the area of salaries and benefits. As we are a service organization, we provide a service. The main driver of the budget will always be salaries and primarily health benefits of the different benefits we offer. It makes up 81% of the budget or a current increase of $314,588. The second driver is that of, and this may go in a different order, I apologize, and something you have in front of you, but I did rearrange the order. But the second driver is increasing energy costs. As we have discussed at many previous meetings, our energy costs are increasing. This is not unique to Woodbridge, and it's happening everywhere and to everyone, to businesses and individuals alike. We are fortunate in that the past work of facilities, of administration, and of the Board of Education has secured an electricity energy rate that is locked in at a very low rate. Due to some upgrades done by Vito Asparro, we have reduced our overall water usage so the increases in pricing for water have been offset by the reduction in the overall amount of water consumed at Beecher Road School. So that's why if you look at this chart, you'll see there's never really been much of a change in regard to the amount of funding going towards water in the past several years. As we know, our rate for natural gas, which is how we primarily heat our building, or really the only way we heat our building, has increased, and that is currently accounting for the increase in this line. Driver number three, preparation for increasing enrollment and increasing student needs. We continuously monitor enrollment and staffing levels. There are some building needs that are currently part of the town building committee capital, capital, town, you know, the committee there, what do you call it, building project for Beecher Road School. And the Board of Ed has been discussing developing an ad hoc committee to address and be ready for potential space needs in the coming years. So this chart here is going to show you the actual numbers in years 21, 22, in the current year. Those are in blue. In yellow, you'll see what I am projecting for next year. And then in the out years, you see that they're in red, and that is what was done in the study that was done in June of 22 in regard to projected enrollments moving out 10 years in the future. Or now, at this point, it's kind of only eight years in the future. The next slide that I'm sharing with you, this chart demonstrates current class sizes as well as projected class sizes for 23-24. The reason for the minor decrease is that our ongoing grade six class has more students in it than the projected incoming kindergarten class. So if you look at this, our current sixth grade class is at 125 students, and our incoming kindergarten class is at 108 students. That's just a projected number. Each summer, a district experiences some new students moving into the district in all grade levels as well as some transfers out of the school in the district. We do not anticipate at this time enough fluctuation to merit any additional grade level sections for next year. However, where this chart is based on current numbers moving forward one grade level and a projected number for kindergarten based off of the most recent enrollment study that was completed in June of 22, on the previous chart, I projected an enrollment number of 845, and this says 837. And that is because here I just took exactly what is on the screen and I moved it forward. So where it was grade one, 117, if you go across and you look at grade two, you're going to see 117. What the projection takes into account on the previous page of 845 is what I just mentioned, that we may have some students who move into the districts and fill up slots in different grade levels and/or we might have students that go away. And I feel that the difference for that will be based on past history of ins and outs somewhere between that 837 and 845 number. So it builds in a little bit of flexibility for next year's number. If you look at this, you will also see that there, it will be a shift of seven sections in grade five to grade six as we continue to have that larger bubble of students move forward. So currently in grade five, you have 134 students and seven sections. They will be moving on to grade six next year, so therefore the seven sections will move to grade six. And all of our other grade levels, with the exception of pre-K, will maintain six sections. The next driver I want to spend a little time talking about is that of special education. In the current budget, two certified teaching positions were added to the special services department through ARPESR, a classroom special education teacher and a social worker. We are moving those positions forward for fiscal year 24 and keeping them in the ARPESR grant. The ARPESR grant ends in 2024, so the two positions will either need to be absorbed through reallocation and/or additional funding in fiscal year 25. This provides an 18-month window or a 12-month window from the start of the new budget planning cycle for the superintendent and the director of special services to conduct an assessment of the current programming in the district and potentially restructure services and reallocate positions. For this ongoing and thorough evaluation of our special services program, we need to restructure the current workload of the director of special services. As our current model, the director does not have the time to do program evaluations. We also need to provide intense and specific professional training for our paraeducators. When you look at the chart that I have up here now, this chart demonstrates the number of new referrals, the number of evaluations, and the number of PPTs in the district over the past three years. And what you will notice is that the number of new referrals and the number of evaluations and the number of PPTs has increased. What the bottom line is showing you is that we are projecting there will be. What the bottom line is showing you is that we are projecting there will be ninety five new referrals in the current school year. As of December first, twenty twenty two, thirty three of them have occurred. The number of evaluations, we're projecting one hundred and seventy for this school year. Fifty seven of them have occurred as of December first. And the number of P P Ts, we're projecting five hundred and as of December first, one hundred and eight have occurred. Uh, many of these meetings do not occur until the spring. Um, so while it may look as if, you know, if you just did an average, i- it wouldn't be that high. Um, this is based off of the data of our current student population who receives special services and I feel the numbers are pretty much aligned to what's going to happen here at Beecher Road School over the next six months. Lost where I am in my notes, so just give me one minute. Okay, so, next slide. Driver number five, reallocation of resources to increase efficiencies. And I apologize, I know up here on here, it's very hard to see all these little numbers. Um, however, the document is available in Board Book and you could look at it there and see the numbers larger. But what this is basically showing you is our staffing levels at Beecher Road School for the past ten years. And then it's showing you the twenty four requests, so what I'm requesting for fiscal year twenty four. The request is a reduction in five point three positions. It's an addition of one point five positions for an overall reduction of three point eight positions. There is a point three reduction in pupil personnel as the positions are both resuming to point five. So currently what happened this year is that we have a social worker position and a school psychologist position that have historically point five. Um, we were fortunate to receive a thirty thousand dollar grant for special education. Um, it was a one-time grant, it's not going to stay around. And what was determined to utilize that for in the current year's budget was to bump those two positions for one year from point five for one of the positions to point six and the other position to point seven. It's the social worker that went to point seven, it's the school psychologist that went to point six. Those two positions will go back to point five, so that is point three of the reduction in positions. For fiscal year budget twenty four, there are five less paraeducators. As these positions are currently unfilled, there's no individual currently in the district who will not have a position in the fiscal year twenty four budget as I am currently presenting it to you. So this is not a reduction in force. There are not five, um, paraeducators currently working here who would not have a position next year. The reduction will offset the cost of the additional positions I am recommending. I wanted to share with you, um, some other data before I go into more detail, but this chart represents a comparison of the number of evaluations conducted by our administrators here at Beecher Road School as compared to, I went with Boa, um, in regard to Bethany and Orange. And what you can see here is that where our building principal is responsible to evaluate thirty five certified teachers, that is an absurdly large number. And I think if you went to districts beyond Boa, you would see no one that has that number of evaluations to be doing. I didn't watch this. Um, yeah, so Bethany, the principal there is doing seventeen certified evaluations and in Orange, twenty seven. Certified evaluations in one of their schools, twenty seven in another school. And then when you look at the Director of Special Services, and I'm just gonna jump to the next slide as well. While this position also has many evaluations associated with it, the key difference between the Director of Special Services in Woodbridge and the Director of Special Services in many other districts is that our director is sitting in on virtually every P P T in the district where in the other districts, they really don't sit in on P P Ts. So to go into a little bit more detail, um, the addition of an assistant principal is to offset and redistribute the workload of the current administration. The assistant principal position that has been built into the budget would likely work fifty percent of their day supporting the Director of Special Services and fifty percent of their time assisting building administration with teacher, staff, evaluation, and discipline. This is a building level position, it is not a central office administrative position. These are approximations of how the position would support the current work. Once the position is secured, then the administrative team can have further discussion on the distribution of roles and responsibilities. This position supports student learning in that at the current administrative staffing level, there is no time for administrators to assist in curriculum development in limited time to have meaningful and actionable observation of classroom instruction that provides meaningful support and development to our teachers. The Special Education Director is spending an inordinate amount of time conducting P P Ts as opposed to observing programs and supporting staff in the delivery of instruction through training and professional learning targeted at areas for growth and development. Data supports this request. Building and administration here at Beecher Road School are currently evaluating eighty four certified teachers. In addition, there are over fifty other non-certified staff members, paras, secretaries, nurses, et cetera, that require evaluation, supervision, and guidance from the administrative team. I had the team gather data from the Boa districts, which you saw before you. And in most districts, as I mentioned, the Director of Special Services does not attend or participate in P P Ts. Typically, they would attend high-level P P Ts, out of district placements, sometimes the transition from birth to three to the preschool program, uh, but they would certainly not be sitting at all of them. Carrie, Carrie currently attends all P P Ts unless she is able to assign an initial or a particular P P T to a school psychologist or a special education teacher with an O nine two. That is limited, however, as they too have assignments and studentses to service. In other districts, building administration would attend and lead P P Ts. So the principal and the assistant principals would sit in on some of those P P Ts. That is not something that we are able to do in Woodbridge as the building administration is already spread too thin. A model that might be considered with an additional assistant principal to assist is that the building administration could begin to sit in on some of the P P Ts in lieu of the director being at all. The current staffing level for administration is not sustainable. It will negatively impact student learning if we are not able to develop strong curriculum, not able to support instruction and student learning through staff development, and if the Special Services Director is not able to adequately evaluate your current programs and make data baited, data-based decisions on changes to curriculum levels of program. So the, the way I see it right now is without the addition of this person, as years go on, your teachers are not going to be evaluated, your staff is not going to be evaluated, your programs are not going to be evaluated, and ultimately, you're not going to have new curriculum developed and that is going to have a direct impact on students and on instruction. And that's why I know that sometimes it's tough for people to understand why a district would add an administrator, but in this case, I think you guys have gotten your money's worth out of having two people run a building this size um, and then having your central office Director of Special Services take care of all the other pieces of it. And at this point, um, it's time to make the investment in an additional administrator at Beecher Road School. And I also want to share with you that that's not something I do lightly. I have presented many budgets over many years to many Boards of Education and I have never made the recommendation to add an administrative position. But I feel very strongly that you are at a tipping point here and that you really need to consider this deeply. Um, to continue on with this is we're also, um, I kind of skimmed over this one by talking for twenty minutes on it, but anyway. Driver, uh, driver number five continuing on, we are also recommending the addition of a point five multilingual teacher. In twenty one, twenty two, the position was reduced to a point five position. Current numbers of students indicate that this position should remain a full-time position. I am recommending that we return that position to a full-time position. In the current point five model, the teacher has no time to provide professional learning and support to the teachers who have the multi-language, multi-language learners in their classrooms as the teacher is barely able or not even able to provide minimum support services to all the students requiring direct support. So when you look at the chart in front of you, um, currently, we have thirty six students and January, it's going to increase to thirty seven. And we've increased from several years ago at one point two nine percent of our population to four point two four percent. And the reason why I want to bring that to your attention is because several years ago, we had a full-time person doing this. And two years ago, a decision was made to bring this position down to point five and yet the numbers were increasing. Um, so I feel very strongly that at this time, we need to go back to that, uh, full-time position. The other thing to note is how many of the students are what we call newcomers. Uh, they've just recently come to the country, um, they're newcomers to our program as well. And so while you may look at the number twenty seven to thirty six going from twenty one, twenty two school year to the current school year as well, that's, you know, X number, it was really eleven because what happens at the end of each year is the students receive an assessment. Some of the students then, um, test out of the program, we monitor them for four additional years, but they're no longer part of our E L program, so they're no longer part of that number. If I were to add the ten students we're currently monitoring, we're really looking at forty six students right now or forty seven. But we're not, we're not providing services, we're monitoring, making sure they continue to make progress forward. So at the end of last year, twenty one percent of those students exited out. So we added eleven new students to E L at the start of this school year. And it's anticipated that that number will only continue to increase as the years go on. I need to take a moment to thank Ton, our currently T S, our current T S teacher. What she is trying to do in a half day and has been trying for two years to do in a half day, um, is absolutely amazing. Um, she does outstanding outreach to the families, which is part of her role in that position. Um, unfortunately, it's very difficult for her to do the outreach, as I said, to the classroom teachers who have the students in their class for when they're not with her, they're not with her all day long, they're in the classroom, they get pulled out to get services from her for a period of time. Um, I also want to share with you that, uh, currently you would need twenty students of the same language in order to offer a true bilingual program, we're not there. While we have thirty six students, we have students representing fifteen different countries and we have many different languages. We have seven students who speak Mandarin, seven Turkish, six Spanish, four Arabic, three Urdu, three Korean, two Icelandic who are joining us in January. Um, and, and it goes on, we have Hindi, we have Punjabi, we have Portuguese. So we have many languages that we are trying to provide, um, to our students. Well, we're not providing the language to them, but, but we're trying to teach many students of many different languages, English. Um, so I, I really hope that you can support making this position a full-time position. Those are currently the only staffing additions that I am requesting in the budget. To offset the costs of the additional administrator and the point five certified teacher, I am reducing the paraeducator line by five positions. In our current budget, we still have seven unfilled vacancies. Although two of them, we have realigned just for the current school year with registered behavior technicians through an agency. One of those positions is currently filled and it's our understanding that the other one will be filled in January. Paraeducators are currently a shortage area across the state and I do not feel it will improve vastly in the foreseeable future. To repurpose some of the positions that were aligned to support general education while awaiting the workforce to grow, makes sense that in the immediate benefits of the two positions I am recommending will assist in a variety of ways to enhance efficiencies and directly impact our students with high needs. Being a paraeducator is a tough position if one doesn't know the expectations of the position in advance. A paraeducator hits the ground running as soon as our students arrive at the building. The paraeducator is the first person many of our students see when they arrive at Beecher Road School and the last person they see as they leave for the day. They work the entire day, they do not have a preparation period. And in a moment's notice, we pull them to cover some other student or some other class setting. It is no wonder that paraeducators as a profession have a high turnover rate. There is another reason for a turnover rate in our paraeducators, a much more positive reason and one that Beecher Road School has benefited, benefited from over the past years. With proper support and training, paraeducators enjoy their work with the students. They want to be able to give more to the students. They return to school and earn degrees in special education or general education and move on to become certified teachers. At Beecher Road School this past summer, I hired two of our experienced paras to be teachers at Beecher Road School. Sometimes they end up being scooped up by other districts. So my recommendation in reducing the number during this time of shortages and high turnover for reasons of job, high turnover for reasons of job dissatisfaction is so that we can invest more time in training and developing and supporting our paraeducators so that they want to remain at Beecher Road School. The state recently mandated that paraeducators receive eighteen hours of professional learning each year. Investing in more training in our paraeducators so that they are able to report to their positions feeling empowered to be successful in their work will hopefully assist in less turnover of staff. We feel strongly that if we take more time to train our staff and for them to be fully aware of the expectations of the position and the dynamics of their position, we will have a reduced turnover rate. Certainly another aspect of the position and the difficulty in finding candidates is the pay and the benefits as compared to the growing work expectations. That is something down the road to be addressed during future contract negotiations. We lose our trained paras to districts that pay more or provide different benefits. So we invest the time in the training and other districts benefit from then hiring our trained staff. And most of them will share with you that they don't want to leave. However, what they're being offered somewhere else causes them to need to leave. It is in the best interest of our students that we take the time to train our current paraeducators in a more comprehensive manner. It is our expectation that as the Director of Special Services has additional time to devote to program evaluation, there will also be a restructuring in the department over the next eighteen to twenty four months that will address any issues or any concerns of over identification of students that require services as well as addressing situations where there are currently over servicing of students. Thus, reducing the number of direct one-to-one supports needed via paraeducators and at that time, being able to reallocate some of those paraeducators from special education assignments to general education. So while I am eliminating five positions in the twenty four budget, there is the potential to reallocate the positions in eighteen to twenty four months. It is also not the elimination, as I mentioned earlier, of a current employee which I am always sensitive to when developing budgets and try to make adjustments through attrition as these positions currently remain unfilled. There remain nine point six general education parapositions in the proposed budget. That is what we are currently utilizing in the district. That is what we are currently utilizing in the district. Thus, kindergarten will have access to para educator support, as well as some other areas within the building based on administrative assignments. Last year, esteemed teacher science specialist was eliminated toward the end of the budget cycle. I have not added that position back into the current budget proposal. As the Board of Education is aware, there is one grade level that currently has seven sections. That bubble will be in sixth grade for the fiscal year '24 and will then age out. So administration and the Board of Education may, at that time, want to have a discussion about adding that or a different position back into the budget if the position is not needed in another grade level. So what I'm trying to forecast there is that there is the potential that as you enter into the following school year, you would have the availability of a teaching position, a certified teaching position to reallocate. Ton has been awful quiet, don't you think? So on this slide is our baseline budget. Donna and I modeled this slide off of previous Board of Education budget presentations. It's intended just to give you a broad overview of where increases and decreases occurred. So if you look at some of the lines that are on here, I think you'll see, you know, the first line, which is the contractual salary increases, that's taking our existing staff and moving them forward. The health and life insurance benefits, taking our current staff, moving them forward. Special education tuition and transportation total. You'll notice that this line increase looks very similar to the $167,000 that is in the excess cost grant that was set aside for this current year's budget. But what this line includes is our current projection for students who would be outplaced in our BCBA. Professional services, you'll notice there's an increase there. One of the lines, and something I've talked about earlier, is in regard to curriculum writing. It's something that will need to be done here in the district. The first area that will need to be focused on is English Language Arts, the reading and writing components. And so what I did was I bumped that line item up a bit, around $6,000, to provide more money for curriculum writing. So that, along with the money that currently remains in this fiscal year budget, it gives Vonda and her staff 18 months to develop that curriculum, and it will give around, there was typically $20,000 next year, I think it's around 28, and we still have the 20 from this year. So you're looking at just over $40,000 to begin that curriculum writing process. Line six, you will notice that this one, there's a slight reduction there. This is the transition of the model from interns to a substitute teacher pool. I've talked about this with the board before. It's something we started this year. Universities currently have minimal interns available each year for districts to utilize. In addition to that, many universities have shifted their model, and districts are now, in essence, paying for eight to 12 weeks while the intern does their student teaching. In the past, this occurred during a different semester, and no fee was charged by the university to the school. In fact, they used to offer an honorarium to whoever the cooperating teacher was. So each time an intern is doing their student teaching, they are not available to us to substitute in the building. Our attendance needs have increased over the years for a variety of reasons. One is you have more staff, so you need to fill more positions when people are absent. The past three years, there's been an increase in a variety of respiratory illness for our employees and their family members. And again, that's something I don't see going away as soon as we would all like it to go away, hence our board members who are currently probably watching us and participating remotely and others as well. So in the 2324 budget, I have reduced the intern line item from seven interns to three because there's still a lot of value added if we can get an intern. They get to know our building really well, they get to know our staff really well, they get to know our students really well. And another benefit that I like about interns is because the administration gets to know them, if they then apply for an open position down the road, they've already been trained and understand what it is that we do here at Beecher Road School. So I see it as an investment. So I didn't want to totally eliminate the interns. I think if you're able to find three every year, you should take them and train them and get your money's worth out of that position. We began that process this year, as I said, with the hard work of Jimmy Sapias. I kind of said, I have this idea, let's develop substitute pool. And the next thing you know, my idea was in Jimmy's lap, and I kind of backed away from it and left all the work, hard work and heavy lifting to Jimmy. And I thank him for doing that, and I thank all the administrators for supporting this new move as we tried to develop a substitute pool. Again, if we are able to train our substitutes, then the hope is that they will return to us each year and not decide to substitute in other buildings because we've made the investment in them, they like being here, and they feel supported in that role. So you want to get a real strong substitute pool. That's one of the takeaways of the intern, you have them for that year, but then guess what? They go on and they get a teaching job somewhere, and you don't have them as a substitute anymore. So it's an investment as well in building a substitute pool that's strong. And part of this is we also have not been providing adequate coverage over the past several years, and that has impacted classroom instruction. So I think it's important for us to realign that money towards the substitutes. If you look at the next line, transportation, I think that speaks for itself that it's increasing a little bit. Two reasons there, but mostly, it has to do with the contract as well as, I don't know, is fuel in that one line? Or no? That's in utilities or somewhere else?
No, it's in, the bus fuel is in there.
The bus fuel is in there. Okay. When you get to the next line, as you're aware, supplies are a discretionary portion of the budget.
Did you mean to go forward?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I do care. No. I don't feel bad. Did I accidentally go forward?
One more, yep.
Thank you for keeping me honest. Okay, so the next line that I just wanted to mention briefly here is the one that says office nursing custodial and instructional supplies. As you're aware, supplies are a discretionary portion of the budget, and generally incremental reductions are taken from the supply line each year, just to make minor reductions in your budget. And one of the things we've kind of shared out to administration, and hopefully, they've been able to share out to the teachers this year, is that that is not an area that we tend to go to this year. They did not get many of their supplies last year. We're going to try our hardest to keep that supply money untouched for this year. But when Donna and I were looking at this, what we were noticing is there was no real consistency from one grade level to another in regard to the amount of supplies. And so I was like, so why does grade one get more money than grade four? Are they doing something different or whatever? And it really just came from many years of kind of, like I said, trimming here, trimming there. So what we did was, we're not reducing the supply line item, our supply line, but what we've done is we've developed a placeholder amount per teacher so that the supply line is consistent across grade levels K through six at the rate of approximately $700 per teacher. So if a grade level has six teachers, six times the 700, that's what was then budgeted for that grade level. It doesn't mean every teacher should now be running out saying, I have $700 to spend. It'll still be a mutual decision. They'll work as a team, they'll decide what is it that we want for our students at this grade level this year. They'll have that conversation with building administration, but it's a consistent amount of money. So if there are seven teachers at that grade level, then it's seven times the 700. If there are four teachers, in the case of MAG, then it's four times the 700. Some areas where we did not apply that are areas where some of our specials are, such as art and music and physical education, because they have their own needs and their own types of things that they need to purchase. So we didn't use necessarily the $700 there. There, we kind of listened to what the requests were from administration based off of their conversations with the team leaders. So we're hoping that that kind of clears up those numbers, and they're not such weird numbers anymore. But I just want to assure you that it's not a line that we have reduced. Some of our team leaders and/or some of our department heads may have asked for things that, if you then look a few down to the superintendent reductions, $2,000 that I reduced. But again, we had conversations first, I spoke a lot to Lisa about it. These were minor things, and Donna and I either felt that they belonged in a different line, so actually, they're still getting what it was they wanted. It's just really should have been maybe under furniture, or it should have been under the general professional learning line item or something else along those lines. Or sometimes it was in fear that you've cut me every year, so I'm going to ask for more this year because I'm anticipating you're going to cut me. And so we kind of build it to, this is what you need in it. But you'll see that it's really a small number. I kept telling Donna, like, I don't want to look mean with that line there, superintendent reductions, like, you know, she didn't give us what we wanted, so that's where we are with that one. Furniture and equipment, I'm going to go back now because I skipped over that. This includes equipment requested by the IT manager. So for the past several years, since we moved to the one-to-one devices currently in grades three to six, the Board of Education would budget for a replacement set of iPads each year. And one grade level, typically grade three, I believe, would get the new ones, and then those iPads would follow them through grade three, four, five, six, and then they, the grade six ones after they graduated, would kind of go back and either fill in something in grade two or kind of replace where things have been broken, et cetera. But this year, there was no money built into the budget for that in the current budget year. So we did not replace any of our devices this year, and we are kind of, you know, crossing our fingers and hoping that we can get to the end of the year with what funds we have to make replacements where we need them. But we are building that money into next year's budget. And the thing that I want to share with you is a separate conversation that has to happen, and it's something that administration has begun to discuss, but there is a possibility of moving away from iPads in grades five and six for the 2324 school year and transitioning to Chromebooks or the equivalent. And this is a deeper discussion that needs to occur. However, preliminarily, we've put this placeholder of funds in the budget, and I just want to share with you about that placeholder. The placeholder will provide a refresh of new iPads in one grade. If administration were to determine a shift to Chromebooks, the placeholder would purchase two grade levels of Chromebooks, so 150 devices versus 300 devices. And some other things that need to be considered when this decision is made is that new iPads that we purchase no longer have the ability to have a headphone set hooked up to them. And that is something that we need when we use these devices for students to take their state assessment on. So we would no longer be able to utilize those devices for giving the state assessment. And another thing to consider when this conversation occurs is that currently, when the students transition to middle school, the Chromebook is the device that they will be using in seventh and eighth grade. So therefore, it will help them to make that transition to middle school if we begin this transition in our upper grades. So the transition to Chromebooks is financially more sustainable. It's the technology used by the middle schools, and it will assist our students in that transition. So it's something I don't think that has to be made as a decision because the placeholder value is the same. So you're either going to get 150 iPads or you're going to be able to get 300 Chromebooks. So the number isn't going to change, but it's a different conversation you can have as the school year progresses in regard to whether you're ready to make that change. It's part philosophical, it's part, you know, what's more efficient for our students. So I'm going to not be here when you have that discussion. And then the last line on this is the staff changes and new positions. So I'm proposing adding 1.5 certified staff positions, and one of those is an administrator. And the cost to the budget is a $37,000 increase for next year because of the reallocating of funds. And I think it's very important that that be part of the story when it's shared, is that we haven't just added an administrative position to the budget, we have found a way to reallocate the cost of that within the current budget. Yes, the budget has increased, but that's because all these other things are going to increase anyway, which are all your salaries and your benefits and your utilities, et cetera. This was not a driving reason for the percentage increase that is being moved forward. So I just now want to summarize a very quick summary of the revenues and grants. Again, this is kind of small print, you have it in your packet, it's available on Board Book. This is just kind of giving you an idea of where revenues come in from, whether it's in the form of grants or preschool tuition. So you have there what was received in '22, what was awarded in '23, and what we're estimating for fiscal year '24. This next slide shares with you what we would have to add to the budget if we didn't have these grants. So while the grants, we actually get more grant money than what is up here, more than the $493,000. These are the things, though, that we would need to keep in the budget. We couldn't just say, oh, we don't have the grant money, so we're not going to have these things anymore. So they're paying for part of one of your math specialists, it pays for one of the software programs that we utilize with all of our students, it pays for part of the special ed director, part of a teacher, part of OT services, part of a school psychologist. The next one pays for part of teaching salaries. Open Choice pays for transportation. We get a grant that offsets what we have to provide Ezra for our nurse. The preschool tuition offsets part of our pre-K teacher salary, and RFA is providing us with, and I just noticed that that should say a one social worker. It's one special ed teacher and one social worker. They're both full-time. It shouldn't say point five. We don't want anyone to panic that somebody just went to a point five. They didn't. We'll fix that slide when we republish this. So what does this budget do for our town and for our students? I feel it maintains the current staffing positions and programs that we have. It provides the net increase of 1.5 full-time equivalents, which will address our students' in high needs as well as all of our students' needs. It includes a pathway to write and develop the ELA curriculum, and I would say that that extends out beyond that because after you have the ELA curriculum developed, you can then roll that over in the following year, take a look at your math curriculum in the following year, take a look at your science curriculum. But it develops a pathway so that you can constantly be looking at and refreshing your curriculum. It includes technology replacement for equipment, which we need to keep going and maintaining. We can't afford another year of not replacing some of the one-to-one devices that our students are using. It supports the strategic plan goals as well as your mission statement. It utilizes cost efficiencies in regard to our utilities and other areas by reallocating staff, and I feel that it is responsive to the town's financial needs. So with that, I'm presenting to you the superintendent operating budget proposal of When we look at that compared to our current budget, that's a $647,000 increase, or 3.94%. The thing that I want to say is what I started at the very beginning of the presentation. As I stated at the onset of my presentation, the fiscal year budget number is not the true fiscal year operating budget. It should include the $167,000. So if we add that on to the $16,419,000, it comes out to $16,587,000, which was really a 6.59% increase last year that Beecher Road or Woodbridge School District received. So then, when you look at what I am proposing, it is only a $479,000 increase, $480,000, or a 2.89%. it is only a $479,000 increase, $480,000, or a 2.89% increase. And therefore, I feel that the request is responsive to the town's financial needs. And thank you. I'm sorry I was long-winded. Thank you. They all had time set on how long it would take. I don't know one.
Christine, Donna, I want to thank you for such a comprehensive presentation and for all the work that you've done to put this budget together. The board will not be taking any action this evening on the proposed, the superintendent's proposed budget. But over the next two weeks, board members will have the opportunity to forward questions about the budget proposal to Vonda and to Donna, who will work on preparing the responses and any supplemental data necessary for our discussion. At a special meeting that will be scheduled to share those questions and answers before voting to accept the proposed budget. That meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, January 4th, with a snow date of Thursday, January 5th. So board members, if you could get questions by December 28th, I know that we are in the throes of the holiday season and breaks and illnesses. But that would be very helpful to Vonda and Donna, who will be working next week. If you can't, they're willing to accept questions up until the day or so before, even at the meeting. But if they have the questions in advance, they can get information ready for you. So again, many, many thanks for the hard work that you've put into this. Go ahead, Jay.
So can you, okay. So I have a very quick question. This is a very unconventional budget in a sense. Why we've got a finance committee? And usually, what the role of the finance committee, according to Cabe and most organizations I've worked in, is to build a budget. So this budget arrived on our desks today. And we have a month to evaluate this budget. We don't even have a month. We have a very short timeframe. So I'm wondering, why did we circumvent the Cabe recommendation policy where they say, use the three months up until December to discuss the issues, for example, salaries, the addition of the assistant principal, which is all needed to me today? It would have been great to have these at the finance committee meeting coming in. And that's what we've done in previous years. I went back and looked. And I looked at our Boa districts. They do exactly the same. So what I'm going to recommend for next year going forward is we go back to that particular model where in October, I believe in September, we discussed the capital budget. In October, we go through line items 100 to 400 salaries in the benefit series. Then we go to the next one. So I think we need to put this somewhere, if I need to make a motion, I'll make a motion, that we go back. I know this year was an exceptional year. We had many, many changes and we had to adapt to those changes. I'm going to say that, you know, the role, the finance committee, it's a very, very important role for them to oversee this, come back to the board and answer a lot of questions from the board. And to see this now and be given a very short space of time to ask all of those questions. And many of these questions aren't in the public forum, as I would like to have them. Where we have a discussion about this assistant principal, we have a discussion about some of the movement of the expenses. I want to see how, for example, you know, you're budgeting. So when I take a look at sped expenditures, they ballooned exponentially. And I'm seeing this general trajectory upwards. So what's your recommendation on that? I would say we need to increase the budget, at least on that line item, to take care of that particular item. And how are you coming up with these? So these were discussions which are usually held at the finance committee. Both of you are veterans. You know how this operates. It would have been great to have those there, not at the board meeting. Unless we want to make the finance committee a board. So the board becomes the finance committee. We can also do that. I'm happy to do that, make that recommendation. That's something the board's interested in, like I said to you. Excuse me. This is worse. We need to get this back on track. And this is a Cabe recommendation that you go through, at least in the three months before, on each of the items. So you discuss them. And that's all done in the public forum. Then these issues are brought to the board. Board then gets a second look at these issues. And then we see the budget and then we can say, yes, we were involved in this collaborative process. At the moment, I feel it's not very collaborative. It's like, it's delivered to us. So I'd like the collaboration to resume, is the way I'm going to ask, if that's okay.
So that's a conversation is the board that you can have discussed. But I just like to clarify that this is a process that I have used in other districts. I did not create the budget when I was here last time. So this is the format that I use in the past. We're building administration department needs, the whole group. We formulate and present the superintendent's budget to the board. The board then takes that and you make decisions in part where you'd like to make adjustments, and then it becomes the board's budget and you adopt it as the board's budget. So I wasn't doing that to circumvent a process that you've had here. I was going, I was asked to present the budget. I went off a model that I was used to. And I did share in advance that this is the model that I would be utilizing. So I do feel that there was time if you wanted to change that or if you wanted to go in the other direction. So I apologize if this is not the format the board was used to. And I hope that you can get back to that track next year, to where you want to be.
This is something that Cabe recommends.
Right.
We look at this together. There are no surprises, too many surprises at the end of the budget, like they said. It's some really important discussions we've got to have here. We've got a very short timeframe within an interval that involves holidays for many things. And so it really makes it difficult.
And I appreciate that and I understand that. But the other thing I want to clarify is, while, again, it wasn't a great deal of time, I did share this information with the board on Friday, not this evening. So orally, I presented it this evening. Yes. It's the first time I'm talking about it out loud. But I did provide the documentation in regard to the board, to the board on Friday.
I do think having a working meeting on the budget that encompasses the whole board and not just the finance committee is also, is helpful. I find that that model is helpful. Yeah. So I think that that model is helpful. And that discussion, well, that is a public meeting, working meeting. So that, those, these discussions will happen in public and will be transcarried.
So I think we could choose, we go with a public meeting right throughout the process so that we go with one public meeting towards, two public meetings towards the end. The model I've seen in the Boa districts at least is that it's worked through the finance committee and then it comes to the public meeting, then we have another meeting to approve. And that means we start in September. And so I think that's what we did last year and that's what I know is that being done previously as well. So my question is, why did we change that? That was my problem. And I hear it. It was a difficult one to hear. But again, if any board member wants to join the finance meeting, then they're more than welcome to do that. Right? It's a public meeting.
It is a public meeting, but members who are not part of the board can only speak during public comment at that part. So this working meeting, I think, is a great way for the entire board to be able to communicate. And I think it just, that comes off of, perhaps last year's budget, we felt that everyone wanted to be able to participate in those meetings equally and not just at the finance committee. And I think going forward, maybe some hybrid of those two would be, would be a great idea. But I do think this model of having a working meeting where the entire board can come together and speak about the budget, not just the members of the finance committee, is going to encompass a lot more viewpoints and we can kind of work through all that together. And that, and the finance committee meetings are public meetings as well. So everything will be happening in public, but I think some hybrid of that is.
Right. So what I'm suggesting is that we go to the finance committee with different options. Then we have the open meeting. And then we have our final budget approval process. So it's really a hybrid that you're asking. You're not asking for anything that Cabe doesn't recommend. I'm going back to what their recommendations, their recommendations. Sit with the superintendent and business operations, work through the line items in the finance committee. If you look at the mandate for the finance committee, it actually says that it's your role to help structure also from the superintendent to the board. So I'm just following that. And I was surprised that we weren't asked and we didn't even bring it to the board to say, this is the way this would happen. It's just being presented to us and we have a few weeks. And so I think the hybrid model, which I think I'm proposing, that's what I'm proposing. All the way we look at the line items individually and the months leading to it, just like the capital budget. And then, as we come into December or even late November, we have a meeting of all of us. That's where all the input comes in. That's the first elements that we're looking at. And that gives the superintendent time to sort of evaluate what we've been saying during the meetings. So no public comment is allowed and any good number of hesitant questions of the finance committee, or the policy committee, or the facilities, they can always direct those questions. So, you know, this is, what I'm trying to explain is that we could do the building early and let's start thinking about that. And it is a Cabe recommendation. We can generally follow the recommendations. So that's where I'm coming with it. Not removing any part of the open dialogue. That's very, very important for every board member to participate. I think we need to have that as well as the building process. So we look at those little pieces that a board member might not have all the time to ask those questions. Does that make sense?
It does. I do appreciate, though, in this year, I think that the, our educators and our administration, I think it's felt in other budget processes, had not had as big of an input. So I do appreciate all the work that the superintendent has done to make sure that the budget reflects what the needs are of the administrators and the teachers as well. Because I think that that was a really important piece that, because of COVID and because of a lot of other things that happened, perhaps didn't come together in the past. So I think I'm grateful for all of this information that has come forward today and all of the background work that was done to really talk to the teachers and the staff that are facing with our students every day and making sure that we're also very in tune to what they need to move forward. So I think in this budget year, I think that the process was laid out to us in the beginning. And I think that there's room to make adjustments for future years. But I think in this particular year, I think I'm grateful that we reached out as far as we did with all of this historical information and made sure that we talked to the people that were facing our students every day to make sure that their needs are being met by the budget as well.
I think my comments are too dense. That's right.
Yeah. We'll build on that. Yeah.
What I'm saying is, changing the process, that comes from Cabe recommendations. So if we want to change that, let's do it as a board. If we want to continue with the open meeting of having everybody at the budget preparation meetings, let's call those meetings. All I'm saying is, let's start in October. Let's get it going across. Whether it's the finance committee, we'll leave it inside for it. Let's do it in October. Does that make sense? So I'm not detracting. I did, this is a great budget, right? Looked at the number.
We can't hear Jay Allen. I think he's muted.
Mute. So I would like those discussions at the open forum, if we could. And this would have been a great forum. So if we'd started earlier, we could have had those discussions now and then had a month to look at, give time to the administration to get back to us and then make our final decision. So this feels a little rushed in that sense. And having to look at all the line items as well feels a little rushed because nothing was provided to us. And I really appreciate this budget. I think it's a very, very good budget. Don't detract from that. I'm more interested in the process going forward. I think that's important. So we do have an oversight role as the finance committee.
Jay, I'm going to suggest that it's my plan to work with the board and schedule a retreat sometime in the spring where we would do some goal setting for the following year. And as a group, decide the direction that we're going to head for the following year and with our new superintendent. And I think that this will be a great conversation to have so that we have our procedures and our policies for operating in place and our goals set for the year, prior to the year starting in July. So I think that will be helpful. Go ahead, Stephen.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I think that's a great idea. And I just want to follow up and say, regardless of what our process is going forward, I really appreciate the vision of the budget you've outlined. This is a holistic view of what the school is going to need and how we position ourselves for that. So whether we, you know, where exactly we fully land, like, this was not a piecemeal process of, well, we need to cut some here and we need to add some there. This was strategic in terms of the needs of the school. Like, this was really impressive, you know, I have to say. Because, you know, I'll listen to people sort of present the big vision and be like, pick, pick, pick. And I'm like, this is a big vision that really makes sense. Not to say that we won't have questions following up and want to understand certain pieces. I had the same question about sped and sort of like what that means going forward. But like, this was, you know, this was really well done from my perspective.
So I will also note that Christine, although tomorrow is her last day in district, has agreed to come back and be part of, sit at the table with us and be part of this budget discussion on the fourth or fifth, depending on the weather. And so I thank you for that as well, Christine.
And Lynn, I wanted to second what Stephen said. This is a very comprehensive budget. Like I said, my concerns about the process. I'd like to improve the process. I feel like we can improve the process going forward by the information dissemination occurs in October and November, December, so we don't get these surprises. Does that make sense at the end? And one of the surprises that I'm worried about is the RPSA funding disappearing. And so that's going to get drawn down. So I would have liked to ask questions about how our plan next year feeds into that process. Are we going to be taking it down slowly? Are we going to get to the cliff in '23-24? So again, I really do like what you put forward. I think it's excellent. But at the same time, there's a lot of questions about, you know, the process. That's what I'm really thinking about going forward.
So if Vonda and Donna, you could make note of Jay's question about RPSA. Perhaps you can have some information for us at the, that January meeting to address that particular question. And again, any other questions that board members have, reach out to Vonda and Donna, one or the other, or both. And I think we'll, hmm? And then the question and the answer, Vonda, will be prepared with Donna and Christine to answer. All right. So thank you, board members. And thank you, administrators for your, and these administrators as well. Because it really was a collective. I mean, I would come in days and they'd be behind closed doors, everybody working and, and I agree with Maria. I think that the input from the people who are, you know, face-to-face with the kids and the teachers on a daily basis, their input is so important. So thanks to you guys as well. Great. We'll move on to 3A2, Adopt the 2023-2024 School Calendar. The proposed 2023-2024 school calendar was presented at the November meeting of the Woodbridge Board of Education. And the suggestions that were made at that time have been incorporated into the calendar that can be found in Board Book this evening. So I'm going to ask for a motion.
I move that we approve the 2023-2024 student calendar as presented.
Do I have a second, Brooke? Motion made by Maria Madonik, seconded by Brooke Hopkins. Any discussion about the calendar from the board? Okay. All those in favor of adopting the proposed calendar, please signify by raising your hand.
Lynn, I can't turn on my calendar, but this is Erin and I'm in, yes.
Erin, are you all set?
Yes. Can you hear me?
She said yes.
Yes!
Thank you. Thank you, Erin. I'm sorry. I forgot to turn my sound up. Marsha, that's unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to 3A3, Tag Eligibility Update. And we have Carrie, who's going to make a, give a presentation this evening on tag eligibility. give a presentation this evening on tag eligibility.
Let's see if I can make technology work. Okay. Can you guys hear me? It's good. Thanks. Great. Okay. So, um, tonight, I got a thumbs up from Anthony. Okay. Um, so this is just the update to what we are going to be looking at for the eligibility for tag. Um, not into the programming tonight. That's something we can talk about moving forward. But this is just how, um, what changes we're going to make in terms of, um, the testing and the requirements. So the team that, uh, started together last year, it started prior to my arrival. Um, here it was a group of general ed, special ed, school psychologists, interventionists, and representative, representative from, um, Woodbridge Education Association, so the teacher, teachers union. Um, they started talking about different ways to identify and evaluate students who are identified as gifted. This is gifted and talented. Talented is something we can also talk about at some point, but this is the more academic side of the program. Um, and then there was a policy change that was in July of, uh, 2019. The requirements that, um, the district is using for tag is still, um, meeting the requirements, but there are some recommended changes to some of the assessments. Um, so previously the district had been using the COGAT, um, as long, or as well as the, a cutoff of STAR scores. So, um, and also the Ranzilli teacher rating scales. So the STAR, um, assessment itself is not typically a measure used to identify a program or not. The COGAT has some, um, biases that are, that sometimes affect students who, um, who come to us from other countries or who have some visual impairments. It's not always the best measure to use. So some districts that are using the COGAT are moving towards using the COGAT and something else, and others are moving away from it. So that's the previous requirements where the COGAT, STAR, and the Ranzilli scales. Um, what we have decided to move forward with is the Naglieri assessment, the SAGES and the Ranzilli scare, uh, scales. Again, because that's the teacher component. And it will be in a more of a multi-step process. So what that looks at, um, the assessments, I've listed what they are in kind of a brief overview. So the first piece of it would be, um, the Naglieri non-verbal ability test. This is about a 30-minute test. It's administered in a group format. It has the pattern completion, reasoning, um, by analogy, serial reasoning and spatial visualization. Um, this, uh, test is one that is used as a quick screen. So you will take, will take this information and students who make it through the first round would get a score, um, that I believe is on the next slide. Of 95% or higher, if you're in the 95% range or higher, you will move on to the next round. Most, um, districts that use the Naglieri look at a 98% um, interval for gifted. So this gives a little leeway to those students who maybe didn't make it into that 98, but that we will give the next, uh, assessment area too, and that would be the SAGES. Um, the screening assessment for gifted elementary and middle school students. This is a group format test. So, um, it is presented in, uh, grades K to three in a verbal format. So they will be given this test with someone as the proctor in a small group where they will work through each section. Each section of it is about 20 minutes or so, um, for each subtest area. And then scores in the overall subtests of 121 and higher will be used with the Ranzilli rating scales that would then the teachers would move on to, um, do that part next. So one reason that this was discussed, um, with everyone is that in third grade, there are a lot of assessments completed on students, right? They start the SBA, they have the STAR assessment. We're going to look at dibbles being added in. Um, this is a great way to get the quick screen, but still gives a good picture of students who would be on that gifted scale. The SAGES adds that academic component in. So the first part has some of the other reasoning activities and then still including the academic component as we're looking at the gifted identification. And then, um, the Ranzilli rating scales are the scales completed by teachers around classroom performance. So where are students, um, in terms of self-starters, leading groups, that end of thing, um, when they're working with students within their classroom? Um, so I did get information from some surrounding districts to see what they are doing. Bethany is moving away from the COGAT. They're going to do the OLSAT. It is a longer test. They're not going to do, um, the SAGES, but they are doing the Ranzilli rating scales. Um, Fairfield also gives a Naglieri. Um, they are doing the COGAT as well, uh, as one of their measures. The other ones that I looked at, Orange does a program, their, their gifted is a program, what they offer. So it is a little bit different because you're entering into a program um, where your classes change and what your schedule looks like change. That's not the format that we currently have. It's something we could absolutely discuss at some point. But, um, but that is a big change to look at something like that. So they use, um, uh, this, their identification is a lot more in-depth because it pulls all these other, um, pieces in. It also includes a parent component and some interviews because it is a, a full program. Westport does something similar. They're using the OLSAT. Um, teacher observations, performance-based assessments. And Trumbull is also using the OLSAT, I-Ready and teacher rating scales. But those three, um, also that I pulled from all have their own individualized programs. Um, so again, this is for what we're going to use for identifying gifted students moving forward this year. We're still working out the timeline of when, so when we're going to give that initial assessment. Cause we don't want all the testing to happen at once. Um, with the SBA coming and with the STAR, uh, we'll do another measure in the spring as well. So we're working that out. The talented identification process is something that we'll also need to address in the future. Um, that is going to have to look, um, there's not so much a rating for that because you're often looking at the arts, um, or you're looking at like a musical ability. And so often that is, uh, ratings from a teacher or a recommendation from a teacher or parent. And so we can look at that, um, at a future meeting. But for right now, it's the update to the gifted, um, component.
And now I will take my screen off. Were there any questions? Thank you, Carrie. Sure. Um, are there any questions? Stephen?
Yes. So this is great. And so for the assessments we're using, what struck me about the, as you, I appreciated the comparison with the other districts. And the part that gave me pause was the teacher observation piece. And that they're so reliant on that because it immediately makes me think about cultural bias in terms of how teachers are perceiving giftedness. So am I correct in terms of the tools that we'll be moving toward that there's less of a chance of cultural bias because they're more structured tests? Is that fair?
Sure.
Or how do we sort of guard against that?
So one of the reasons that people are moving towards the Naglieri and some districts even use it as some of their cognitive evaluations when they're working with students. The larger version of it, um, is that it is, it, because it's that non-verbal test, it's really that piece of it that is, um, just the spatial, the way your brain works and the manipulating pieces. So you're not, there's no language component to it. That is the piece that sometimes is the bias that's built in. The SAGES then also gives us, um, academic areas. It has an English or, um, an English social studies and a science math. Um, and then there's another piece that is, the third component is also, um, kind of that processing, thought process, um, identification. So that's the third component of that. Um, they are recommended as more, there's nothing that's perfectly unbiased, right, in, in the world. But yes, that is the goal as we want to move away from the COGAT, which as such a language-heavy, um, test, it does have some, um, work behind it that's, that shares that it is a more biased measure. The teacher ratings are still incorporated in part of it, which I think is important because in the classroom and as, uh, performance, there is that piece of it too with students. You want to get some teacher feedback, but it's not the measure that's being relied on. So, uh, even in the previous way that it was identified here, they were all three areas kind of taken into consideration altogether. This in order to get to where a teacher is even to that point, you had to have had, um, the first components where you've met that standard score or that percentage score. Does that make sense?
I, I have a question.
So my question was, um, you've got K to three, you're doing the SAGES.
No, we're only doing it all in, it's the, I'm sorry if I, the test for the SAGES, it's, there are two grade bands. There's a K3 test and there's a 46 test. We're going to give the K3 version to the grace, grade three students. It's not done every year. It is just grade three.
So, so you're going to pick nobody up until grade three, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. So all the assessments will be done from grade three young?
In grade three, we'll do them and then we'll offer in the grades going forward if students, um, these are both also measures that are much easier to give and less time-consuming than the COGAT. So if students move in from out of district and a family wants to talk about doing that, we can do a fall administration if we want to look at doing something like that. Also, um, we can do it if you were not eligible in grade three and you would like to opt-in to it in grade four. Yes, it could be given again. Now you'd have to give the other version of the SAGES. And I can't tell you tonight what that, um, what that number would be because honestly, I hadn't thought about that piece of it, that it would be the other test. So I'd have to look into what the qualification number would be. But yes, it would be possible to give it, um, in grade four or five or six if you wanted to reevaluate or have your student reevaluated.
Lynn, we can't hear.
Sorry, Mike. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. So my second quick question is you said we're using 95% and other districts are using 98%. What about the SAGES? You said a score of 121. Is that what comparable to other districts?
Sure. So the 95% interval is that you may be gifted at the 98% interval. If you use, that is the measure, that is the measure where the test would say you are gifted. So we want to give some room in there to give students an opportunity. It is one assessment, right? So you can't rely on one measure only. Um, the, the SAGES has a window, kind of similar to that. It has a couple of separate windows where if you fall within this band, you may be gifted. If you fall within this band, you are. And you may be gifted in the language component or you might be gifted in the math component. So it is possible the student would be gifted in math, but maybe not in the language component. So it would be looking at that piece as well.
So that was going to be my next question to say, how are you going to disentangle different parts of the curriculum and what they're gifted in?
And that will come out through the ratings because one of them is, um, one of them is English social studies and the other is science math, which we'll break it up.
And there's no weighting on each of those? So if you just qualify on the raw number?
Uh, there are, uh, they're not, there's not a weighting, but there are like raw, or there are subtest scores for each one and then a combined score. So your combined score at 121 is what would put you at the gifted. But, um, I can get back to you if you want specific numbers, but there are specific numbers.
Perfect. And my last question is how long does eligibility work? So how often would you test?
When you're gifted.
The kids test out.
When you're gifted, you're considered gifted and you don't test out. So the general thought is that if you are once identified as gifted, you are always gifted. In Connecticut, um, there is a requirement to test for giftedness, but there's not a requirement to, um, provide gifted education. So some districts don't provide any. So as I was looking, I can't remember if it's Wilton or, um, Wilton or Westport, one of them, uh, they don't, they test and they don't provide any gifted education. So it just depends on the district what they're going to offer. But the eligibility, once you're eligible, you're eligible. So the gifted here right now, once you go to middle school, there isn't any gifted education. There may be some leveled classes, but once you've been labeled that, it's just kind of your label. We don't take it away.
Thank you. I think Mike has some questions.
Mike? Mike, do you have a question?
Yes. Yeah, I do. Can you hear me?
Okay. Hang on. Hang on, Mike.
Okay.
Okay. You're good, Mike.
You can hear me now?
Yes.
All right. The, the last question was related to one I had as well. Um, so just to clarify on what you just said about, um, status here. If, um, kids have already tested into, into the program, they're, with the old measures, they're not going to take these. So they're just categorized as gifted. Okay. Going forward. Um, uh, the other question had to do with, um, weighting. So you, you were talking about weighting on one of the measures. I think you were talking about the, um, the SAGES. Um, but I'm more curious about the weighting across all of these measures. Are there certain weights given to, um, each one of these for determining whether someone is gifted? Or is it a holistic assessment, more of a holistic decision rather? Um, and if so, how is that determined?
So can somebody mute?
Yeah, that's me.
Thank you. Um, so the way that it was done in the past, things were weighted in the way that they were looked at or they were, um, the scores were all put together and you had to be in that 95 percentile, 95th percentile, I believe is what it was. The recommendation from the state is, um, around 10% of your population in that grade level would fit into that category. So if a student meets the cutoff criteria, they would be, they would be in. Uh, 10% is a guideline for what it is. But if certainly the class, um, comes through, that is like this last class that came through, there was a higher than 10% group that, that made the threshold for gifted based on what the requirements are. So they're not going to be weighted, but anyone who took that first component, the Naglieri, if you didn't score in that top 95 percentile, you won't take the SAGES. So it'll be smaller groups of students taking it that will already pare down the students who would be eligible possibly for gifted.
Okay. That, that, that's helpful. Um, I, I just did to clarify a little bit of what I, what I meant by that was, let's say, um, um, a, a student, um, crosses that 95th percentile um, score and they score above the 121 on the SAGES, but, um, they don't meet the criterion for the teacher rating scales. A teacher doesn't rate him or her as, um, as get, as gifted. Is there, is there, how much weight is placed on that versus the weight placed on the other two measures for make determining whether a student is classified as, as gifted?
So that was one rea, sorry Lynn, that was one reason that that was the last component. Um, because there is some subjectiveness to a rating by a teacher. It can be completed by more than one teacher as well. Um, so if there was a student who seemed like they were on a bubble, then we could have a second person rate them um, and look at that as it would come up. It also is hard to exactly predict what things will look like until we've given the measures together. So, you know, I, I suspect we looked at kind of the numbers and what other districts were doing and, and our guess was that this would encompass that 10%. It may only be 9% of the next class. It could be 12% of the next class. And if it's 12, then it's 12. 10% is a guideline. We're not going to not enter 2% of people because they're not in the 10% bracket. It's the guideline of it. So, um, you know, like this year, if, if there were families that questioned certain pieces of it, we had conversations about, my student scored these, this and this, but they didn't get in because of a rating. We had conversations about that and could look back at. could look back at particular students if needed, but it only happened with a handful of kids. And I'm in a bit of a disadvantage, I guess, because I wasn't here to watch the process go through ahead of starting this now. So I'm not sure I can fully answer how that will work, but I would guess that as things come up, if it was just a teacher rating, that would be something we'd have to talk about as a team where to go with that. As particularly, I mean, if it's particularly if a student had quite high scores in the other areas. I don't believe that that would rule out a gifted component.
Anything else, Mike? You all set, Mike?
Yes, sorry, I was muted.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Sarah Beth, no. Erin, you're all set. Carrie, thank you very much. Yes, Lisa's going to use your computer. That'd be great. So now we're up to the Beecher Road School update. Mrs. Sherman.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to share with you some of the wonderful things happening at Beecher. I need to start with, you all know this already, but we did have our PTO book fair and I I need to start there because our PTO volunteers did just a tremendous job organizing the fair, running the family night. It was a really wonderful event. They were here. They were here in the morning. They stayed through the whole day. It was fun to have some volunteers in our building supporting the book fair and the kids certainly loved getting new books. So many thanks to the PTO for running the book fair and running a very successful book fair once again. I need to give another shout out to our music department, Ken Caldwell and Lexi Fonda and Janine Lemke. Not only did they put on a really amazing concert with our fifth and sixth grade students that, as some of you already know, were was very, very well attended, but they also sent several students to the CMEA, which stands, by the way, for the Connecticut Music Education Association. There is a middle school honor festival that our students auditioned for and kudos to our music department, kudos to our brave, brave students who attended this CMEA event. And we actually had eleven of our sixth grade students qualify for this middle school honor festival that will be occurring in March. So really, really proud of all of those students and it's a definite credit. It's the first time the CMEAs have been held in person since COVID. And I I know that I've been there before and it's a really kind of overwhelming event, but just just an amazing opportunity for our students and really a credit to our amazing music department. So I really need to give a special shout out to Mr. Caldwell, Ms. Lemke and Ms. Fonda and to the students who were so brave. I I really just don't think I was that brave in sixth grade to go and perform in front of judges and I don't think I could have done that. So kudos to our kiddos for doing that. Just a quick couple of curriculum updates. Our sixth graders a couple of weeks ago completed their cell projects. It was really, really fun to see all of the variety of ways that our students presented their cell projects. There was posters. There was things that lit up. There was things that spun around. And it was really exciting to see them. They did a really beautiful museum in the rotunda and other students got to come in. I was there when a group of second graders were in the rotunda, learning all about the nucleus and all about ribosomes. And those little second graders were like, I'm not really sure I understand what they're saying, but I'm trying, Mrs. Sherman. It was really, really sweet and the sixth graders had a lot of fun, I think, presenting their science projects. Our kindergarten students are working lately in writing workshop on writing about their favorite family traditions. And that's really, really fun for all of them to sort of share the things that they do at this time of year. Not only to celebrate the holiday, but just to be together as family. And it's really fun to see their writing and their illustrating. Some third grade students just recently wrapped up a mystery unit in reading workshop. And not only did they get to read amazing books and be detectives, some of them even solved a true crime here at Beecher and caught the criminal by following the clues. So way to go, third graders. And today I got to see some first graders working on mathematics and they were sorting shape by attributes and they I just love it when little six-year-olds are talking to me about attributes and using the word attributes and talking about these are curved lines and these have, they were talking about strong angles. And I was like, what are strong angles? And they meant right angles. But they were talking about how the right angle makes a strong angle. So they were like, it's a strong angle, Mrs. Sherman. And I'm like, oh, gosh. Let's tell you have to tell me what that means to first graders. So our mathematicians there were doing a great job. Final update is a book. You all know I love books. You should know that by now. I read this book to the stu- to the students at Beecher. It's called Kindness Rocks by Sonica Ellis. And it's about this little girl who collects rocks and writes beautiful, beautiful messages on them. And because it is Do Good December, by the way, and a lovely calendar was shared out with all of our students about acts of kindness they can do all during the month of December, I challenged them to write some of their own kindness rocks on paper. I said, don't please don't collect rocks from outside. Please use paper. So I have students every day coming in and giving me words of kindness that they're writing on their rocks. So I have a few to share with you. This one says, you make an impact. Kindness rocks and so do you. Be kind with a little picture of a bumblebee, which I love. It's B E E kind. I just love that. Love yourself. Keep smiling. Never say no. And then one teacher not only encouraged her students to write some, but also asked her students to think about this for homework. And then she was so touched by all the things that the students came up with. She typed all of the responses and gave it to me. So they said things like, it's okay to cry. You are enough. You can make extraordinary things from mistakes and kindness makes change. Just further evidence that kiddos are amazing and we are super lucky to be with them. So that's it for me. Any questions?
Thank you so much. It's always uplifts my heart to hear these things. I don't know if any board members have any questions for Lisa tonight.
Is muted.
I really should have given a huge shout out to Jimmy. As you heard from Superintendent Siriac, it's it's a big building. There's a lot of people here every single day and I was out last week, unfortunately, and Jimmy and Carrie and the North Office staff and really everybody, they held it down. Jimmy was at the concert and I I actually got my husband did a very good job of recording just his speech so I can watch him and I sent him I said, I sent him a message telling him how I was very proud of him. He did a really great job. So yes, big kudos to Mr. Sapias for holding down the Beecher Road School environment for a week.
Thank you, Lisa. We appreciate you. We appreciate Jimmy. We appreciate Carrie, the North Office staff, brah. And appreciate all that's going on here for sure. Upcoming meeting presentations. January's board meeting will include presentations on strategic plan, action plans, an update on that, as well as an update on pre-algebra. So if board members have any questions or specific things they would like to see addressed in either of those presentations, if you could either shoot me an email or Vonda, we'll make sure those things are covered in those presentations. Next on the agenda is the Town Building Committee for Beecher Road School Capital Projects Update. Mr. Hughes, you're on.
Great. Thank you, Lynn. The Town Building Committee continues to meet every other week since our last meeting. We also had a walkthrough of the school inside, which was great. We had members of the Board of Finance, Board of Selectment, Beecher Road Staff and Board of Education members. I think it was a very eye-opening experience. Some of them had actually never even been in the school before. They made that known. So we got to show them what we're up against. I think it was very eye-opening. So much so that we agreed to an external walkthrough coming up, hopefully as early as January, which will really show some issues that we're having on the outside of the building as well. Right now, the Town Building Committee is at drafting RFP proposal. So we're at that phase. And it's looking like we're aiming towards having one contractor do all the needed fixes. I agree to that tactic. It avoids us being subcontractors and avoids us being general contractors. So I think it's the direction we're headed in and I fully agree. The town pool keeps on coming up to the conversation, but I think we need to make sure it's for the town to look at. It's not part of the original charge of the building committee. So we'd like to further that conversation as well. I think that's it for an update.
Thank you, Jeff. I I want to really thank you for the time that you're spending with the building committee. I feel like our representative is is the most knowledgeable about the building and its needs and facilities. So we're very lucky to have you, Lynn, so I thank you for that. I'm going to call the board's attention to Board Book where you can read the meeting minutes from both December first and the December eighth meetings that took place. And then I'd like to make this comment. According to Board Policy nine one three-three, the chair of the board shall create and assign membership to ad hoc committees as shall be deemed necessary or advisable. Based on discussions in the building committee meetings, as well as discussion with town leadership and other board members, it is my intention to establish an ad hoc committee to study the space needs of our school. I plan to work with Mrs. Tenza in the next few weeks to develop the charge, the membership, and the timeline for this ad hoc committee. And I will be prepared to present that for action at our January meeting. So we'll be working on that. If you have any thoughts that you'd like us to consider, feel free to reach out. Finance Committee. Jay.
So I can you hear? Okay, because my mic keeps going off, sorry.
Mike, can you? Mike, can you hear Jay? Okay, great.
Yeah.
Okay, great. So we met on Monday, December the twelfth and the key items that we discussed were the operating budget as of December the first and the the budget update. There wasn't anything for the budget update, so I'm just going to go through the key points that we talked about. The administration currently forecasts the budget deficit of about sixty-eight thousand dollars, give or change nineteen dollars. So it's about sixty-eight thousand dollars towards the end of the year. So what were the reasons for the deficit? So it was incremental, special education, transportation needs. There was out of district tuition. There was MRF underbudgeting. There was additional substitutes audit professional services that we needed because we met certain thresholds now. And heating was a big increase as we've all probably experienced at home. But the good thing is gas prices are coming down. Heating, gas, thermal prices are coming down. So hopefully we're not going to see as much of an increase going forward. So the way I saw this is some anticipated expenses were offset by some unused lines and some vacancies. Now, one thing we've got to be careful about is if those vacancies get filled, then this budget deficit will continue to grow. So that's something we need to keep an eye on. Superintendent, as mentioned, discussed transferring funds from interns to behavioral technicians. We talked about the merits of this and I think that's something that could be brought to the board. I think that's a very, very important issue. And so we talked about this and I think the superintendent is making some decisions on this to use some of those lines up. We also talked about a part of the deficit being covered by the excess cost grant, which was supposed to fall into last year, but now is being rolled over into this year. And so that's been shown in the current budget. So we have to be a little careful. That's another question I have going forward. That should the state cut the excess cost grant going forward? Us putting this in in future years, we have to be very, very careful about. So those are some general questions. The superintendent talked about the budget timeline and the two or three quick questions we had were members asked about the town pool. Maria raised a very interesting question and she suggested that, you know, we hadn't really, people hadn't really given attention to sort of rehabilitation costs is the way I'm going to describe it. That, you know, nobody had really understood what the implications. Yes, there's a pool there and people might throw out the idea that we could use that for classrooms. But had anybody done any work on this? And that's why I wanted to come back to Jeff and sort of mention that the RFP, does it include those sorts of items looking into sort of refurbishing the pool or upgrading the pool only?
The pool comes up in conversation, but it's not the original charge of the building committee. So I like to keep it separate. I like the original charge ability committee to focus on the roof, the drainage issues and the technology and security updates. The town pool, I think it's a whole nother topic altogether. But I think Maria makes excellent points. No one has really looked at that cost and it's something that they shouldn't really take into consideration. It's a great idea in theory, but I think it would be just as expensive, if not more, to try and transfer that to classes.
So like you, Jeff, I feel the same. I think Lynn's proposal of the committee to look at the expansion and the needed services, that would fall into that sort of bucket is the way I would describe this. And the last thing is that after the media, during the meeting, at the end of the meeting, Erin Williamson made a comment, but there was communication problems. And so we adjourned the meeting and then the question was asked, so I thought, let me just raise it. Erin made a very important point. She said about lobbying the state of unusing some of this surplus this year towards special education funding for schools. Again, I'm going to sort of defer back to the board on this one. This is a letter that the board could write and we could solicit assistance from other boards in the district and wider and gather some momentum in a letter. And I know Erin likes wonderful letters, so I think I would put this on her shoulders and say, Erin, this is an excellent idea and you would get the full support of Finance Committee and the Board, I think, on this particular issue. And I think that was it. And we had the budget today. So that was great. Thank you. If there's any questions.
Thank you, Jay. Any questions? I don't see any. Thanks, Jay. Policy Committee, Maria.
Thank you, Lynn. We have three policies this evening that have been on thirty-day review. So I'm going to go ahead with E number one, and that is policy one three, one three. The Policy Committee took a look at this policy. It was last reviewed in 2012. And we wanted to review it because in light of the new gifting platforms and wish lists, et cetera, that have come out since 2012, we wanted to make sure that we were staying within what our policy stated or make revisions if those were needed. And ultimately, we decided that we did not need to make any revisions to our current policy to stay current with all the new types of gifting lists and funding platforms that exist today. So we are, we have reviewed policy one three, one three. And it is up for adoption this evening. So I would like to move that we adopt policy one three, one three. Gifts to school personnel as submitted.
Do I have a second? Motion made by Maria Madonik, seconded by Brooke Hopkins. Any discussion? Go ahead, Jay.
I noticed on point five that you suggested that the superintendent will have full discretion. So when I see equipment coming in, so for example, recently we may might have, I don't know, technology equipment that's provided by the PTO to the school. What happens when that equipment needs upgrading? What happens if there's an accident with that equipment? And so something that worries me is I know it becomes a part of the school equipment pool, but is there any policy on how we maintain that? Who pays for the maintenance on that?
What line were you referring to, Jay?
Yeah, you're looking at one three, one three.
Am I looking at one three, one three? Oh, sorry, three, two. Sorry, next one, three, one, three.
Okay. Hold that question, Jay.
I thought it was all one.
Hold that question for in a few minutes.
Okay, so I'm going to retract. I have no questions.
No questions on one three, one three. Anybody else have a question on one three, one three? Good. We'll vote. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Erin, I'm assuming yes. Erin, I'm assuming yes.
Can you hear me, Lynn?
Yep.
This is Erin, I.
Thank you. That's unanimous, Marsha.
Thank you, everyone. The next policy that is up for adoption this evening is Policy 2400. And this is a new policy which outlines for us goals and a process and a timeline for a collaborative relationship and evaluation of both the superintendent and the board. It sets goals for our collaborative relationship. It sets a process, and it sets a timeline for that evaluation process. And then if you'll notice on the back, this also follows the CAVE model. Our appendixes are also right in line with the CAVE model, and we've actually done this board self-evaluation this past year as well. So I'd like to move that we adopt Policy 2400, Evaluation of the Superintendent as Revised.
Do I have a second? Stephen? Motion made by Maria Madonik, seconded by Stephen Lawrence. Any discussion on 2400?
Is there a conflict between, so I know the prior superintendent contracts, but I know contracts stated that there's a negotiation between the board and the superintendent on about mission criteria. So is there any conflict in this policy?
And the contract? No.
So Jay, if you look at the timeline, there is still discussion between the board chair and the superintendent about the evaluation and the timeline.
So there is still a need to.
Right. Yep.
So I think that the hiccup that we've run into in the past is that we didn't have a timeline or a process outlined, and so there was, there was a discussion of where that fit in. And I think this just kind of codifies for us what our goals are for that collaborative relationship and sets expectations in a timeline.
Any other questions? Clarification necessary? Okay, we have a motion to adopt made by Maria, seconded by Stephen. All those in favor?
Aye. This is Erin.
Erin says yes.
Thank you, Erin. Marsha, that's unanimous as well. Maria?
Thank you. Thank you, Board. For our final policy up for review this evening is Policy 3280, Gifts, Grants, Requests, and Memorials. This was last reviewed in 2017. We reviewed it again during Policy Committee. We've chosen to add reference to Policy 1313 as well. And so we're presenting this to you tonight. I move that we adopt Policy 3280, Gifts, Grants, Requests, and Memorials as Revised.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Stephen? Motion made by Maria Madonik, seconded by Stephen Lawrence. Any discussion? Jay?
Okay.
Jay, I think that your question is probably best answered by the regulations that go along with 3280 that are on the flip page. And those are new, and those were drafted to address those concerns, to make sure that whatever gift was brought forward was forward-thinking in the space being used, in the type of technology being used, and make sure that it fit not only with our mission, but within our curriculum as well. And so I think adding these regulations to review any gift that's given to the school by any organization will help make sure that that's aligned and create a path where if something is donated, we have a way to follow up on that in the future. So I think it address, those regulations that are on the flip side address those concerns.
Right, I saw point five as I was going through. And so my primary concern was that, that we get equipment that we wouldn't necessarily need going forward.
Right.
And it might be a one-off, and how do we handle disposal? How do we handle maintenance?
Right.
And so that would be a worry. And I could see something like, I don't know, a kiln. So we decide not to do pottery and art glasses, and we have a kiln that we have to maintain, et cetera. And so things like that.
So the second part of point five, any request that requires additional costs that impact the Board of Education budget will need to be reviewed by the superintendent and Director of Business and Operations, who will in turn consult with the Board of Education.
And that will be on each and every gift, right?
Correct. Correct. So that we'll be able to assess the long-term costs, the long-term needs of the facility, and make sure whatever is being offered fits within what those needs are, and make sure that we won't incur any longstanding costs because of those gifts. So that will absolutely address that. And then, of course, does the superintendent have full discretion in denying, but if things are going to impact the Board of Education's budget, then the Board of Education becomes involved as well. Was there something additional that you were thinking of?
No, that was primarily my concern. My concern was, we get equipment.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then suddenly, we cancel that program or we change things, and then we're left with that equipment, and we're left with disposal, usually it's a disposal cost, and maintenance.
Correct.
And so how do we handle those? And I noticed you've got that on point five, where the discretion would be with the superintendent. And then if there was any ongoing cost, it would go to the Board of Education.
Right, because it would, that would definitely impact our budget as well.
Okay, any other?
It's a great point, though.
Sorry, Maria.
No, it's okay.
Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor, signify by raising your hand.
Aye.
I think I heard you, Erin.
This is Erin. Aye.
Thank you. Unanimous, Marsha. Wonderful. All set.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to the board, and that our next policy meeting will be in February. I believe it's February 4th, but we'll check.
I can't tell you because I only wrote down G and J's. CAVE liaison report? Maria, anything?
Um, there's nothing to report. The CAVE did add a couple of their other webinars to their free library. I did go to the Board, Roles and Responsibilities. I took, I linked on to that. I thought it was an excellent presentation. I thought it built on the FOI presentation that we had at the beginning of the year. So if any board member's interested, it was about 35 minutes long. It's a great commute listen, if anyone has a long commute, but it was very informative. But no, nothing else to add.
Thank you, Maria. Sarah Beth, do you have anything to add for CAVE? No. Okay, thank you. Okay, we're on to new business. Tonight's new business includes all the mandatory motions that are required for our new superintendent. So the first is authorization to hire. So I will move that we authorize Vonda Tenza, Superintendent, to hire staff for the Woodbridge School District in accordance with Connecticut General Statute 10-151B, effective December 12, 2022. Do I have a second to that? Jay? Motion made by Lynn Piazek, seconded by Jay Daya. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
This is Erin.
Unanimous, Marsha. Next, authorized signers. I move that we approve Vonda Tenza as an authorized signature and representative for the Woodbridge School District, effective December 12, 2022. Do I have a second to that? Maria? Motion made by Lynn Piazek, seconded by Maria Madonik. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Erin said yes. It's unanimous, Marsha. And the last one is ED 099, Signature Change. I move that we accept the Permanent Single Agreement for the Connecticut State Department of Education's Child Nutrition Programs and authorize the Board of Education Secretary, Sarah Beth Delpree, to certify the action of the Woodbridge Board of Education that authorizes Vonda Tenza, Superintendent of Schools, and Donna Koonen, Director of Business Services and Operations, as signers of the CSDE reimbursement claims submitted on behalf of the Woodbridge School District. So all of that was said so that it could be legally correct. Do I have a second to that? Maria? Motion made by Lynn Piazek, seconded by Maria Madonik. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Erin? Great. Unanimous, Marsha. Sarah Beth, you'll get in to sign that paperwork this week, and we'll be all set with that. Time for my community service announcement. The Facilities Committee is scheduled to meet on Thursday, January 5th at 7:30 a.m. The Finance Committee is scheduled to meet on Monday, January 10th at 4:30 p.m. Due to the observance of Martin Luther King Day, the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education will be on Tuesday, January 17th at 7 o'clock p.m. And as noted earlier, we will be having a special meeting on Wednesday, January 4th, with a snow date of January 5th, for the purpose of discussing and voting on, taking action on the proposed budget. Five, public comment. Going to scroll and see if there's any public comment for this evening. I see none. Maria sees none. So I'm going to go with that there's none. Thank you. And the board is going to enter into executive session in accordance with state statute for the purpose of receiving an update on school safety and security. For the public's information, no action is expected following the executive session other than to adjourn the meeting. So I'm going to make a motion that we move into executive session to receive an update on security and invite the Superintendent, Vonda Tenza, and the interim Superintendent, Christine Siriak, to attend. Do I have a second to that motion? Jeff? Motion made by Lynn Piazek, seconded by Jeff Hughes. All those in favor? That is unanimous. And there is a, board members, Vonda has sent a Google Meet for, who are remote. No, we're moving across the hall, for that meeting. So Mike and Erin and Sarah Beth, check your email for that. And then we'll be back to adjourn. Thank you all. Have a happy holiday season and a happy new year.